And some of our community would sure like to see us offer that maybe for our kids. So, so I certainly won't speak for you, but the Osmond Board have, you know, some conversations, you know, at that level, different from us. And we're like, if you were to have girls wrestling and high school bowling, we would sure be open to that at the high school level, starting this next year, this current year. So those conversations were kind of happening simultaneous with can we make junior high sports a reality coming this fall? These conversations were in April, can we make that a reality this fall? And so we were able to navigate that, had open discussion at our April Board meetings, recorded out our committees, recorded out to the full boards. Our full board was certainly open to continue to pursue that conversation. Get the A.D.s very active and involved in how can we make this happen in a May school board decision to happen in the fall? We knew that was necessary because if we were gonna do it, we want to get those kids together this summer already. Even at the junior high level, you start to have formal, you know, activities for those kids, whether it's weight room, camps, those kinds of things. So if we're gonna do it, we gotta, we, we, let's, let's do this in May. Both boards decided to have a two, a two reading approval on that. So we're gonna vote. We, Mr. Brimmer and I worked on the language with our board president. So we had precise language at both boards, and I believe it's the same night in May. First reading to approve a full junior high sports co-op for the 25-26 school year was essentially the action item language. Okay, so those readings passed unanimously at both boards on the same night. And then we knew we had more conversation in our communities since it was an approved action item by both boards. We wanted to make it clear, we're gonna do that, we're gonna need two readings of the same language by both boards, May and June. Okay, and we proceeded to do that on June 4th. You had a meeting in Osmond, community meeting?
Yeah, we had a community meeting, opened up, talked about where we're at, kind of the process that as you shared with that. The only additional one I forgot to mention before is unified bowling. Talked about that, that is something that we're gonna kind of work together with, but not as a co-op. And the reason is, when it comes to a district tournament, each team can only bring one athlete. And unified bowling, you've got athletes and the partners. This allows us to still kind of work together, not practice together. One plane's one, two, three will be one school, four, five, six, another school. But you have to be able to take one team from each school and still kind of going to events together and working together, letting the kids kind of get to know each other as well. Yeah, in the June meeting, we talked to our community and where things were moving and got input. And then in our June board meeting was the second reading and vote. That was also unanimous in support of the junior high full, full sports co-op.
Okay, and unified bowling for the Plainview crowd because this is new for us. Our board did approve, offer unified bowling last month, I believe. This is an attempt by the NSA to make sure that we do our best to involve students with special needs in NSA activities. And so unified sports at the NSA level, bowling is one, bow track is one, and they're, they're continuing with, with more of those. Those are the two primary ones, I believe. But so a special needs student is paired with a general education student, and they participate as a team. And so we're, we're happy to offer that now at Plainview. We'll, we'll practice together, but we won't, we'll compete as separate teams, is the intent. So we'll, we'll move forward with that. We knew that when we were gonna, we focused on junior high for a couple of months, knowing that we would need to pick up the conversation about extending it into high school. We'd have to do that rather quickly. And the reason for that is, high school football runs on a two-year cycle. And this is, this current school year is the second year of a two-year cycle. And so the NSA manages football and the schedules of football. And so they require cooperatives to be determined by November 1st of the preceding year. So by November 1st of this year, we have to declare whether you're gonna have a cooperative program or not for '26-'27 football season. That has to be decided on November 1st. So it did put us in a position to, to, you know, get the conversation going, or essentially not really let the conversation die about having this evolve into, into high school. So we started with the junior high, many of you are aware of that, if you have kids in junior high, and how that is going. We're not gonna necessarily belabor that too much, but you will certainly have the opportunity to share this evening your feelings and thoughts on that, as well as whether you think that should maybe be extended into, into next school year. So on, on July 7th, our committees met again, we met in Osmond. The committees that began meeting in April, that led us to a junior high sports co-op. On July 7th, we met in Osmond to focus on, does this evolve into high school for next year? And if it does, here's our timeline. We have an early one for football, as I mentioned, November 1st, the NSA has to know, therefore board action has to take place in our October meetings. So we can declare that to Lincoln by November 1st. And so that's, that's what's got us to this position, you know, this evening. And we always, we, we knew even prior to our meeting on the 7th of July, that we were gonna come together as two full boards, welcome members of both communities to listen, question, answer, participate in the conversation about this, about this future, because yes, we reckon that certainly it's a big step. And I, I would just conclude by saying, what, what, what really, what Mr. Brimmer said, talked to me all the way back in, in March, which in March, we went so far as to, I went so far as to say, it would probably be a non-starter if you were to expect Plainview to rebrand, meaning you won't be Pirates. We're gonna want, we're gonna, we're gonna wanna become somebody new. We're gonna wanna come together and have a new name, and a new mascot, and new colors. I said that is, that's why I think I was okay to speak for our board and our community that that would probably be a pretty tough struggle. And he made it very clear, nope, we're not interested in that. We just want our kids, I shouldn't speak for you, we just want our kids to have opportunities.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. For, for us, we want our kids to be able to participate, play, be able to grow, be part of the team, be able to start younger and work on through. And not that these things aren't important, but it's more important to have those opportunities. So wearing red and the Pirates, our, our kids are running around school now, the junior high kids, and they're all getting along, and, and they're loving it. So that's not, that's not a big issue. So continuing with that, maybe just continue with that. It's good.
Okay, and certainly a reasonable request could be, at least on the programs and whatnot in the paper, be the Plainview, Osmond Pirates and I, our board thought that was certainly a reasonable, a reasonable request. So that brings us to this evening, and now we don't wanna look back, we wanna look ahead. And so I will pass the mic to Mr. Rasmussen throughout a few more comments, and then we'll, we'll look at some data that we have available for you today.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Earl. You hit on a lot of stuff that I was gonna talk about anyway, so I'll catch the stuff that, that you didn't. I just, again, wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight, our friends from Osmond for being here as well. We hope, you know, we can give you some good information, answer your questions and concerns. And that's why we're here, we're here to listen to what, what our communities think of this. So we've mentioned, you know, the process. I just say, I know, and something we heard in the committee was that, you know, in previous arrangements that maybe Osmond's been in, they, they felt like that long-term commitment wasn't there. And that was something they were really looking for in this, in this relationship. And we, we tended to agree with that as well, our committee, is we want this to be a long-term relationship. We're close together, you know, we've heard parents who are getting tired, going here, going there, we're right down Highway 20, the travel's easier in the wintertime, you know, all that kind of thing. We've also, through this, we've kind of encouraged youth programs to start working together as well. And that way the kids can get to know each other, have more time to, to practice and play together. I think that's a big benefit, and that's been going pretty well from what we've heard. And then the fact, you know, that, that Osmond was willing to, to join us, basically, you know, as Pirates, and understanding that the majority of the games and practices are probably gonna be here, but we still have, we'll, we'll have some bits in Osmond. I think that's unfair. So, one thing I wanted to touch on is just that our A.D.s, and team here is gonna give you some numbers, enrollment numbers, things like that, and how that affects classification and how we combine teams to a book. And then after the presentation, we're gonna have time for Q and A. And we'd ask that you please keep questions and concerns focused just solely on the sports co-op issue. We're not gonna take any questions regarding maybe facility plans or bond issue or any potential consolidation. We wanna keep the discussion focused on the sports co-op, because more than likely, these, these talks wouldn't happen anyway, whether we did facilities, any facilities or bond issue or not. So this would've been brought to us this morning. So I'll like throw it over to Mr. Mo, if he has anything he wants to add, we're welcome to you.
Thank you, Tim. I, I think between your superintendents and Tim said a lot of it, we are just happy to be able to be involved in these talks. And meeting with their committee, seems like we've been meeting with them a long time, or it hasn't been very long, but we're very good to work with, and I'm sure they would say likewise, it's, it's been pretty good so far. And we just look forward to continuing talks and seeing how far we can get this to go. We are in it for participation for our students, student athletes. They are the ones that are most important to us, and that's what we're leading forward with in, in this joint venture. So we are turning it over now to the A.D.s and that's cool.
All right, you guys have some documents in front of you. One of them should have a bunch of numbers on it, I don't think yours are in color, but it should have three columns. So when you look at that, how it's broke down, Plainview on its own would be on the far left side, and that's a breakdown of everybody that we have in our school from 12th grade all the way down to kindergarten. I shared the same information I got from Mr. Polk with Osmond, there would be the middle column. And then if you were to combine those schools together, that would be your far right column to see total enrollment. I know at the top of it, it says 24-25, but that is active as of this year, so that should say 25-26. So these are all of our current class sizes that we have. When you get below that, classification for the NSA, it's broken down into boys and girls, male and female, and it's broken down by classes and by year. And so every year, they take your freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and they take the boy count and girl count to determine what classification you were in. So the first line after our total enrollment would be what the boy count and girl count would be for both schools and combined, put in there. So that would be all your freshmen, sophomore, juniors in combined for 25-26, move down to 26-27. So for the next five years, that's broken down. The very bottom left side, you have classification numbers. That is a, I'm gonna say rough estimate of where the break line is for C1, C2, and D. The reason I say rough is because when you have boy and girl enrollments, those fluctuate quite a bit each year, so the break lines could be a difference of three or four kids based on how the state's enrollment goes together. But last year, those were the numbers that were used and where the lines were. The break between C2 and D1 this year could be 38 kids, it could be 45 kids. It's just depends on what other schools' enrollments look like, so it's very hard to judge on that and where we would be. And I know if you look at Plainview's numbers, we float right at the C2-D1 level. If you look at where we combine Osmond and Plainview together, we're floating at the C1-C2 level between boys and girls and activities. So that's where there can be a lot of discussion, and it can be a little bit difficult to tell you specifically, this is where we would fall. I think Kurt would share too, we have some mobility within our, our communities, and so enrollment numbers are not always consistent. It's not out of the ordinary to see four or five kids come in in a semester, or maybe four or five go out in a semester, and also over the summertime. So I mean, our enrollment numbers can change, but what I can tell you is, overall enrollment, both schools grew in the last year. So both, both school districts are growing. And when you look at it, we have strong numbers, boys and girls, and it seems like when you look at the combination of the two, where we may have low numbers in one of those, Osmond seems to have strong numbers in those, and helps balance things out if you're looking at a combination of the two. Big talk for tonight is football, and so I put down football classification when they do this. They do classification every two years. So they will take our freshmen, sophomores, and juniors from this year, and that will be our classification for the '26-'27 school year and the '27-'28 school year. They don't reclassify again after that, because they'll send out a schedule, you play home and away, and it's a full two years put together. So when you get down there to the next part, it would have classifications for Plainview and Osmond, and that's why there's skips, 28 to 30, 30 to 32. And you can see where those enrollment numbers would be based off of the number of kids that we have right now in our schools. To the side of it, I put what classification that would be. Eight man moved to a 54 or less boy count would be Class D. The top 32 teams are gonna be D1. Everyone else below that, down to 27 as a class enrollment, would be D1 and D2, and then they split them in half. Everybody who is above the 55 number, 55 or above, then would be classified as C2, and then they set the break line, splitting them in half after B for C1 and C2. And A is 32 teams, B is 24 teams, and then everybody below that gets split in two for C1, C2. With that, I also put cross-country and volleyball classifications down there based off of the enrollments and the projections for where the cut line would be, so you could kind of see where Plainview looks to fall, where Osmond looks to fall over the next few years. On the far right, it's in, I have where it would be projected if we are combined. Where we would fall classification-wise, I did the same for girls' basketball, boys' basketball. They have to be separated because it is a girl count, boy count. Boys' wrestling, I did not put girls' wrestling on there, because right now there's only two classifications. And based off of the classifications, we're not even close to Class A, so we would just be Class B until they go back and change. So everything on the left is gonna be what you need to know for Plainview. Everything in the middle is Osmond, and then with a co-op, with a combination, on the right is where things look to be projected if we are together. Kurt, Ryan?
All right, so. All right, now I'm on, yeah, I guess we move on into, to number nine, which would be the presentation of recommended high school co-ops for '25-'26, and then also for '26 and '27. Suppose I throw this right back down to our A.D.s.
And I, I, you probably could say, you know, if we're talking football again, it would be '26-'27-'27-'28, because you are locked in for two years, you know? And, you know, we have this school year on here, because it does include, again, girls' wrestling for this year and boys' and girls' bowling for this year, as well as unified. So we are talking about a high school co-op for this current school year, and then '26-'27 school year, it includes football, that would be also '27-'28.
Does anybody have anything to add down there?
Just, just one thing with that probably, just the idea of working, working together and so forth, just does, with the numbers, we also, so much of our discussion we talked about allowing our students to compete, both schools together combined, being able to compete, have full teams, to be able to have full JAB, full varsity teams in, in those sports, and just to be able to, to make each other better and help each other out. I think this is a good fit, and I'll leave that.
One thing with co-ops I wanted to add, and I think Dr. Earl will hit on it, it is a two-year agreement with the NSA, so anytime we're co-opping, no matter what sport it is, you're agreeing to a two-year span, just basically because of scheduling and things of that sort. And I guess talking with Kurt and Brian too, they had talked about co-opping with girls' wrestling and bowling this school year. Those are schedules we already have built, and, and talking with them, we were to go together, they would utilize our schedule, just because Osmond does not have those schedules, so it would be an easy merge, where we're not having to tell schools, we can't come to your league, or can't come compete with you because schedules are already built. So that was another reason we thought we could have that conversation this year and make those additions if it was something our boards approved on for this school year.
And again, the, the high school bowling and the girls' wrestling would probably be on the agenda for the next, for the next meeting of all school boards. And then the, the football, basketball decision, anything further would be on the October agenda. Yeah, so I mean, the, the focus here is gonna be football for '26-'27, '27 to '28, and then also for boys' and girls' basketball for those same, those same years, it's two-year agreement, they're being the same leaders. We'd also kind of talked, and that goes to number 10, about next steps, you know, or stuff, the timeline, see how they work out down the road, so I'll have Wyatt talk about that, just.
He was in the committee as well, so. Um, I guess, I'm sure there's a lot of people asking why football, I mean, kind of touched on that, why basketball? Well, basketball is identified as, as an immediate need, anyway. So the only reason why we're looking at football and basketball, and basketball to it, anyway, to this initial vote, is just go ahead and get it going, get up, step, anyway, towards making this work. And then we're probably gonna look at taking a little bit of a pause as far as the timeline goes, because we have, Dr. Earl, correct me if I'm wrong, we have 90 days before we have a board on bond resolution, correct? 60 days, 60 days. So our board's gonna be a little busy, and so the committee's gonna be busy along with that. So every sport then from that point on, after we get done with the vote and the bond, anyway, concentrating on that, or reconvene, and then outline the timeline, and for every other activity, not just sports, but activities, anyway, co-op. And that did, the A.D.s and the committees, anyway, will, will be working through that, anyway, for a while. That's not something that's gonna happen overnight. So we have a lot of dialogue, anyway, after that vote. We're shooting for a February vote, if it can happen totally, but best timeline possible. And then after that, if it happens, anyways, we'll talk more after that.
Mr. Frumley, excuse me, let me, we've got.
We've got, we've got 90 days before we have to have a board resolution, that's 60 days. Board resolution is 60 days before a vote. We haven't determined that February for sure is the vote, could be February, could be May, one or the other, February's still on the table. That means we've got 90 days to determine precisely scope of project, and we've gotten anywhere you said we were gonna go. Just a little bit, some sort of a.
So the, I think also a reason is, you know, we quite quickly have seen that the junior high volleyball and junior high football just appears to be great vibes coming out of both of those. And it was a little bit like, gosh, it'd really be hard to tell these boys, you can't play together anymore. Now volleyball has not been mentioned as something for next year to, to consider, because that wasn't an immediate need asked by, by the Osmond Board. If you've been any of our junior high volleyball, there are girls everywhere. And it's, it is pretty, it's pretty, it is pretty neat to see. There's not an immediate need based on participation numbers for us to be one team, but that'll, that'll be difficult to tell those, for those girls, to maybe not be able to be on the same team, or else they become freshmen next year, those eighth graders. And then our A.D.s will make a decision about, gee, we should play you and Osmond participate against each other in volleyball, until we come together as one team. Maybe we ought not, and so that'll probably be an administrative decision. So, but, but those boys, for example, and girls, working together, for them to potentially come together in football and basketball, a different sport, but they, they just see it as, hey, we're just, we're playing games together. So that, that seemed reasonable, along with participation numbers would probably benefit both sides of that.
Any comments down there from Osmond, are there? Okay, well, like I said, we're gonna have a, a Q and A session, so if you, if you could, just, like I said, keep your, they'll bring a, bring a mic around to you, and just if you state your name, maybe you state the town where you're from, and if you guys have certain things you want the boards to know about, shoot away, we'll try to answer your questions or explain them better. So this time we'll take questions?
Comments as well?
Yeah, you have comments?
Lady a jerk?
Why not look at volleyball?
Just to make sure that everybody is involved in the conversation, even though acoustics are okay in here, you can probably hear very well. We appreciate if you, make sure you use the mic or your question or comment, so it's clear for everybody.
My name's Eric, or, glad that a Plainview here. Question is, why not do volleyball just to ease, ease their, you know, like, talk about the transition between playing against each other, with each other?
Yep, and I, probably the best answer we can give you is, it's not off the table. And so what Dr. Earl was trying to get at, is that we have time, and wait, even after this early spring, make that decision yet if we wanted to. And so A.D.s and the administrator will be working towards that. It, it could happen, although it's not off the table right now. So just, we're doing football and basketball right now on this initial vote, just to kind of kickstart the whole process. Does that make sense?
Yep.
I think it's fair to say, if you gave overwhelming feedback to both boards, that you, you wanted to, you know, include volleyball or something else, I would expect that it would be a strong consideration by both boards.
From, from Osmond, we're not against that, it's just also, we're trying to be very understanding of what all is going on in the Plainview District, and bonds and all these issues, that we didn't wanna, we have to go steps towards this, we're great, but if it's something you want us to discuss, you know, let us know, and both boards, we have to do that.
Can the A.D.s clarify what the date is for volleyball, for declaration of a co-op?
June 1st, the, the co-op date. So that means next summer, by June 1st, we gotta have paperwork turned in, and order for a co-op to take place.
For that, I see.
Mr. Schrempf, if you could keep that in the mic, just to make sure everybody hears it, sorry.
Uh, June 1st is when that has to be decided. The reason we kind of wanna do that before that point in time is just because of scheduling. As A.D.s, we schedule next, we already have next year's schedule built, so we're working on 2027-28. We can let those schools that we're already contracted with know that we would be changing our schedule, or we would not be participating against them, whatever it might be. But the absolute latest date you have to do, the co-op I would be June 1st of next summer.
Dr. Rasmussen, I have a question. I know obviously you don't have all the detail to work out, but you have some sort of gas on how cost we broke down between the schools. work out, but you have some sort of guess on how costs we broke down between the schools. Just sharing facilities on that, sure the modicosty side, one would think they would go down, good share.
Yeah, great question. Pretty much the same way we're doing junior high, we're just tracking everything that, that's going on and it'll be split. We've got uniforms this year, half our district, half Plainview's district, so together, both one district made that. So it would be a, a split share, not a, not a head tax or anything like that, but a 50-50 split, true partnership.
Minus transportation to try to keep track of fuel and wear and tear. So transportation would just be, you know, on our own and, you know, whether we, they pick us up, we go this way, we pick them up, if we go that way, or we both meet there, just an administrative decision, but not something we nitpick about necessarily. We want to travel as much as possible because we want those kids together as much as possible. And the travel to and from is kind of a big deal for junior high kids, you know, not as big for high school kids, but we, we just, we love the chatter and the vibe of those kids together, so. But yes, the A.D.s have created a spreadsheet with tabs and it's kind of a, I don't think any money's exchanged hands yet. It's kind of an end of season or end of year. Here's the balance for revenue, here's the balance for expenses, here was, here was our end of year, but you owe us 37.50 or something like that. So simple, junior high is very low revenue, low, junior high gate receipts have been massive for the Plainview Osmond Pirates. Junior high is a very low expense, low revenue for the most part. And also we pay for our own coaches on our own negotiated scales, so that's separate. High school would be a different animal, for sure. The numbers would, would change, the decimal point would move, there'd be more zeros. The process would be the same. And, and very transparent, you know, for sure too. That would, that would be, you know, in open board meetings and those documents are shared publicly on what that would be.
All right, my show, I'm from Plainview. Perhaps just curious, you said you want to do it long-term, but is everything just always a two-year agreement?
It is. There, there are cooperatives across Nebraska that, that come together and split up after two years or after 10 years or more. So yes, future boards could decide after this cycle, you know, we'll go on our own. So, so yes, you're not locked in, you're beyond those two-year agreements.
But, but our plan is long-term. Our plan is just to keep it going. We watch all those of the youth, how they're working together, the juniors working together. We expect nothing different from the high school. And from our perspective, the more we can be together and keep that together, that's, that's what, that's the plan.
Hi, Liz Merican, thank you. I actually have two questions, but the first one has to do with football. And when you looked at the table you gave us on the next year cycle, the numbers for the 26, 28 football says we would be about around 57, you know, boys enrollment cutoff with C2 is 55, but right now our seventh grade classroom, my son and I have 14 boys and three of them play football. So how do we not, if we combine, have the same issue down the road as, we have the numbers and we have PC2, but the participation numbers are so low that we're not going to be competitive or you're playing, you know, kids that are small, young, that kind of thing?
Hey Liz, I got that one. So I went through projections and obviously that changes because each year you can have more kids go out, you can have less kids go out. But I went all the way down through our fourth grade junior pirates. So next year combined, we would have 41 boys out for football. 26, 27, we would have 38. And then from that point, we would be 42, 44, and then the number goes above 45 and we're ranging between 45 and 50 from that point forward based off of the boys' numbers. But past that, I can't go any farther. And like I said, that, that changes, it ebbs and flows. If you have a really good team, you're going to have more kids go out. If you, if you struggle, you might have a few kids not go out. But I'm also a believer in culture and if you have the culture set, kids are going to want to play. So I'm pretty confident in what we have and kids want to be a part of it.
One, one thing just to add to that as well is when we have more numbers with the kids going out, we're not, we're not having some of our boys in football, or girls, but we don't have our students playing higher up before they're really ready. When there's, some freshmen, they're ready to play varsity. I was in a very large school system in Milwaukee and we had freshmen, we had JV, we had varsity. And what was nice to see was the growth of those, of those young men, that they're able to grow and get ready and they weren't suddenly in a situation to where they might get frustrated and quit. If you've got someone that's smaller, not quite strong enough, not the height of them, but just the size of them, they're not quite ready and they start getting smacked around, that is very discouraging. Some are ready, some aren't, but allows us to develop. Now, it's one of the things that Kyle's talked about, being able to develop the students to be able to be more competitive and to be able to, just to get better individually and to get better as a team. And that also besides the success, it's, it's the participation, participation numbers, I think, at least what I've seen, just stick around and, and stay there.
Okay. Second question. Um, this is for girls basketball, because they talked about doing that much sooner. And this doesn't really affect me because I don't have any more girls, but maybe somebody has the same question. On the production series, it says girls basketball combined would probably be C1. Okay, so my question is, even combining the two schools, are, because we're talking about them both, you know, you're going to be traveling further, you know, playing different schools that maybe are closer to, you know, bigger areas. And I know recently a lot of markets have been, you know, doing D League and playing some, you know, doing some extra stuff, but even combining our two small schools, do you think that we would be able to be competitive at C1 level? Like, I'm not sure who's C1 now, you know, like Milford or some of those schools like that. Because I know they're very competitive. Because you hate to see, you know, combine the kids and you, you have them, girls like that, but then they're just getting, you know, not many things.
Yeah, that's a fair point. The thing to remember is your classification really only matters in postseason. Your schedules in the regular season wouldn't change much. You're still going to play your conference schedule and you're still going to play your schools in your area. Your classification really depends on where you go to play your sub-district. So even being C1 doesn't mean we have to play a complete C1 schedule. You have to play enough games to qualify for postseason in C1, but you're still going to continue to play your same conference opponents, your, your same opponents in the area. What will change is, is the classification that you don't play sub-districts in. If that makes sense?
I guess to add to that, talking about, you know, can we compete at that level? Yes, I truly believe that. I think I speak for Osmond as well when we, we've conversed about girls basketball. I know last year it was hard for our girls to even scrimmage because we had nine in some practices, we had 10. Osmond had eight to 10 girls out there, were kind of in the same situation. If we combined, we have 20 girls out. So we, we have consistent, more competitive practices where we don't have that incoming freshman whose skill level is, I've never touched a ball before to, we're playing a middle-of-the-road sophomore against our seniors and being more competitive in practice. And when you're more competitive in practice, we're going to see that transition into games. But yes, we would also add more C1 schools and we would pick up some bigger competition that's closer in the area and find those, because there are some closer to us, but we wouldn't completely revamp our schedules like Kurt said, we would still keep closer schools.
Julianne Johnson, just to kind of go off without the transportation, I think probably all schools have issues with transportation and school bus drivers, the way it is, along with coaches are also hard to find. What are their expectations now to be traveling further and being more time away from their families if it will be there?
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's fair to say that there could be some adjustments to schedules, especially if we're expected to compete at C1 in sub-districts. Our, our coaches would, would want to, to have some of that. Plainview folks, you know that we already have a pretty robust schedule for both boys and girls. I mean, we, we've got a couple of C1s, plenty of C2s. I think we played a class 18 in volleyball. We opened our basketball season with Pierce. I think they're a C1 school, maybe they're a C2, but from our perspective, they feel like a C1, right? So I mean, we're not far away from a pretty competitive schedule already from, from a Plainview standpoint, but certainly a fair point. You know, driving home from South Sioux on Tuesday wasn't, wasn't awesome. We know how busy our kids are going to be the next morning. They had FCA or they've got ONEACT or, you know, you, folks know how some of our kids, they're completely immersed in everything, which we don't disparage that, I, I don't think, but, but it, it, it runs a pretty thin. We understand that. So from, so I, I, I think that's fair to say. And I guess our A.D.s would probably be as mindful under some direction from superintendents, under direction from board. Hey, we, we don't need to be traveling down New York to play Fillmore Central for a cent and pick another one that's an hour plus away, especially if we're looking at a school night. So I think it's fair to say we'd be mindful of that. But your coaches would, if they're a C1 sub-district, they're going to want a robust schedule because PowerPoints are at play. And if you're playing down in classification, that does affect you. So it would be a balance of level of competitiveness, location, night of the week, and those kinds of things. But, but that, that's, that's certainly a fair assessment that there could be more travel with a C1, C2 schedule.
You also talked about other activities. Are you looking at Rama, the ONEACTs, eventually like that? Also, so previously, Osmond, you have been with Wausau currently with, with Wausau, with ONEACTs or Rama?
Not anymore.
And the same thing with basketball with Randolph and with Wausau, so those have all ended. Can we ask what was great about that and for the A.D.s of the other schools and why may the board change that direction?
Mr. Frontley.
Thank you for your question. Yes, Osmond has, has traveled the area, that is correct. We worked in a basketball pull-up with Randolph along with junior high basketball, correct, junior high basketball. And then after that, when that broke up, we went to Wausau and we did football, junior high football and junior high basketball co-op along with boys wrestling. Before we were at Randolph, we did spend four years at Wausau with a play production as well. What we have found out, I guess, in the last four years, what was great was the numbers. We really appreciated the numbers in practice. I've been a part of some of that and the relationships that the kids build that I can, I can say from my own standpoint, that some of my children still carry, was very beneficial to the, to the co-op. We greatly appreciate a larger pool of coaches, a larger pool of drivers, administration to administrate games, all that type of things. We talk a lot about enrollment numbers, but it's participation numbers that matter. So the more students that you can have together, the more coaches that can coach them, the better opportunities they're going to have. They're, like we've said, they're going to be able to play at their athletic level. And that is so important in all sports, but especially football, to make sure that kids are playing at the level they should be playing at so that they can have success, they can enjoy what they're doing, that they got time to grow into different positions. And those are all the benefits that we have seen in our previous co-ops. Unfortunately, we have found that the schools that we were co-op-ing with don't want to get out of Class D. And as soon as our enrollment numbers are pushing us up into C, they didn't want to go any further. And you could see very quickly that the long-term effects was not going to be there. It was going to be short-term co-ops as soon as our numbers were going to push us over into Class C. I commend Plainview. I don't get that feeling here. I, I commend them that they're not afraid to move up a class, that they want to grow their school, they want to be progressive, and they don't want to keep their students down into Class D. They want to believe in them. They, they want to grow them so that they can continue to compete at a higher level, which we can all agree on is exactly what, what we want them to be able to do once we graduate them and give them their years beyond high school. We want them to be able to be competent in themselves. We want them to believe that they can go out and compete and get the jobs that they want and the positions that they want. And that's really what this is all about. That's what we do in school. We teach and then we use these extracurricular activities as extra tools to teach as well. And that's what it comes down to. And so if you're asking why our co-ops continue to come to an end, it was because as soon as that letter C came up, as in C2 or C1, they weren't interested in moving up and they wanted to stay down and compete in Class D. And there was no way to continue on with staying in Class D, it involves Randolph into Wausau. And so we are continuing to play football at Wausau this year. And our boys wrestling team will continue to compete this year as well. And it's really very interesting to me, there's no animosity there, even though they know this is the final year. There's no animosity among the coaching staff, amongst the administration, amongst the students. They're kids, they love to just get together, eat, which is what they're doing and what they're continuing to do. Unfortunately, we were not able to make it work to go into further activities because it kept bumping us up into Class C. We asked those schools to co-op further, the answer was no. As soon as we heard the answers of no, we knew that co-op was not a long-term fix, which is what we want, is what we want to get into. Talking with Plainview, we get the feeling that's what they want as well, is they want a, a long-term commitment, a long-term partnership, and not afraid to grow and to compete and challenge our students to play at a higher level. And that's what this is all about. I hope that answers your question. Thank you.
Just something to add real quick on that. I, because I, I heard from some of our folks this summer, well, you know, Osmond and Randolph didn't work, went to Wausau didn't work, and now they're here, you know. Well, I had, I had done my homework. I had, I had contacted former superintendent at Randolph, for example, and quite honestly, he said, that was, what happened between our relationship was not Osmond's fault. Said if anything, it was more our fault that that relationship did not work. Our, our friends from Osmond know that. Plainview folks need, need to know that because I don't like any chatter in our community that Osmond wasn't a good partner at Randolph. I didn't want, didn't want to do a conversation with Wausau because Osmond was currently having conversations with them about, you know, their, their future relationship. So there, that was confirmed by the former superintendent at Randolph. This didn't work, it was more our fault, Randolph's fault than Osmond's fault. Not that he was necessarily looking to place blame, but, but I said, be candid with me, and he was, and that, that was the comment that he made to me.
Um, I, sort of, kind of a hypothetical question, I guess, maybe we'll, there, but so say we do this pull-up here and then I believe the board here approves new practice facilities for football. So let's go down three years down the line. We're going to call on this one to spend $70,000 for X, Y, Z kind of improvement. Is that something that we look towards to each split or is that just a one-side kind of purchase for the other exit company?
I, I think it's fair to say that there probably would be, both boards, you know, private maybe committee coming together, we're looking at significant capital investment in a program. How, how do we want to handle that? And from my perspective, I would expect that both boards would be agreement to it. And if they were, that that would be a 50-50 split. If both boards aren't interested in it, it either doesn't happen or one board assumes the whole expense. But I, I... But I wouldn't anticipate that would happen, as you mentioned, hypothetical, Carter. But you're right, that's certainly a reasonable question. So, that's how I would expect that to be handled. Through a committee conversation, take it to a full board, and then full boards have the same conversation and the same action, same agreement, and then a 50-50 split. If they both agree, it was a necessary investment.
Nick Schroer here at Plainview. Going back to the school of class, excuse me, classifications. Here in you guys is, we feel we can compete at any level. How can we're sports specific and not every sport at the school? Like, we're picking and choosing what sports we're doing when. If we feel we can be competitive, why isn't this across the board?
I think right now, it's just the time. You've got to have this done in a certain amount of time. You know, with football, basketball, we just kind of, like you said before, I don't think anything else is off the table. It's just we're resting the A.D.s. We've got to have paperwork done with these two sports. So, like Mr. All, I think I said earlier, if we're in consensus on whether we're already in together, I think we'd be great with that. Let's do it. That's kind of where we're at now, look at.
Is that a group or wrestling?
Okay, everything's, everything's going to have a time. It's going to be a co-op. There'll be a time. I can't tell you the time of which one it is or how it's going to fall through. But it's all, it's all going to be outlined in the next, like, how.
And be structured.
If we want it to be structured. It's going to be, we're going to do this on this day, this on this day. And then that'll lead to, if we go forward with it, it'll lead to an ultimate full co-op.
And I think along with that, but looking at per sport, it allows decisions on each one. Because they may be ready for a combo now, and they might be ready for a combo down the road a couple more years or so. So, it allows the boards and things to really talk more about it and not just do it all in one shot.
Yeah, the plan is to get it there. It's just, you know, eventually it's going to be there. Does that want to space it out appropriately? I think do every activity between both schools, one signature of the pen, nine would be extremely aggressive and chaotic. I think we have to have a structured timeline, how this is going to work. We have to identify the two immediate needs for both schools. And then we'll use that as springboard, and we'll start working through the rest of them. And why we have time to do it then. We talked about volleyball still hasn't waited till June. Winter sports, we get beyond that for the deadline. Well, we have time to, maybe we'll go through this. But we've got 90 days in the way before our bond resolutions. We need to have some time working active. So, that's kind of where we're at. We're going to be in here again on Wednesday night, talking about facilities and bond. And it's just going to get busier, you know, after the Plainview work.
I think too, like, why I said, your A.D.s can provide you the dates for the declarations. And I think knowing November 1st is certain sports to be respectful of you guys and your other projects they have going on, to not make you guys seem so overwhelmed. We're not afraid to have that discussion in April for potentially the rest of them. I would be opposed. But knowing that volleyball, you don't have to declare until June 1st. Gives everybody time to ask their questions, get them answered, and go into the decision level headed.
Did that answer your question, Crystal? Thank you.
What about if you have a coach that doesn't want to participate?
Just curious, not asking.
Well, we didn't ask our coaches necessarily, do you want this? It's a democracy. If the majority of coaches wanted, we'll do it. Because it's really, it's not about, it's not about them, to be quite frank. It's not. It's about our kids, it's about our future. So, yes, we've got some lukewarm folks to that. Because there'll be a certain level of inconvenience, maybe for both sides, maybe more for the Plainview coaches. I think that's fair to say, that that could be the case. And so, they would have a decision to make, whether they can be all in and embrace it or not. And if they can't, as an administrative team, we'll find a solution. We didn't intend to tell either side that we don't have room for your coaches. Anybody that is currently on staff, I think is going to be welcome to continue on staff. So, it's possible we could have two, three, four-plus coaches for a particular sport. I think that's possible. Through attrition, maybe we'd let that get down to four or whatever. But if you want to pay for them, right, because we're paying for our own extra duty, if you want to pay, and we would, you know, expect, anticipate, and hope that those coaches would work cohesively. Would be an administrative decision on essentially, who is the head coach? Because you do need one voice to be the head coach. And we would expect that that head coach would embrace enthusiastically what the decision is made here. And if they can't, we would find a better solution. Is that fair to say, A.D.s?
Hey, that's that mic'd up Brooke, it's Chomper, no Chomper? For sure.
So, there is hypothetical there with some of the combinations and splitting expenses. But there also is a reality of, am I correct? If we go back to C, do we have to go to 11 man? So, both schools would have some immediate expense to retrofit or redo their football fields, right? You've got to move your goalposts again and repaint them.
Pretty minimal expense, to be honest, but yes.
Because we didn't, we were at C not all that long ago. It seems like a long time ago now, but we were at C not that long ago, so we just... So, what happens if in the middle of your decision, or in the middle of being C, is there a way to drop down? My concern, of course, I've got a junior that's going to be a senior. I would hate for him in football, just so you guys know. All the parents are going to be concerned about whether their kid is going to be able to play or not in their own school or not. Of course, every parent probably has that issue. But it's a competitive sport, that's the way it goes sometimes. But what happens if we all of a sudden find ourselves in a situation hypothetically where we're not able to be in the playoffs? Or we have to, are we still going to be in the right size to be in our conference that we just joined and created? And is Osmond joining our conference at the same time? And is that allowed? And or is it a group team that kind of got tangled up in there? Is there a way where we could somehow become disqualified for being in playoffs, specifically in football, in the next few years, if we have to go to 11? The football coaches, of course, know how hard it is, or how hard it would be to retrain the kids any year. One of my concerns with my son being a junior and then a senior would be, can he figure out how to play what he can? I mean, they all can, kids are adaptive, I'm not going to discount anybody. It would be a big switch, to switch to 11 man like this. But you've got to do it at some point, and I understand that as well. So, there's a lot of weird questions. I guess the main one is, would there be a way we could be disqualified from playoffs? In the middle, or?
No. So, once you declare that you're going to be 11 man, no matter how much your enrollment grows or shrinks during that timeframe, you're going to stay in the class that you are for that two-year cycle. To answer your question about the field, our stakes are still in the ground. So, it's a matter of just moving goalposts. We have everything still marked out. And then having played both, having coached both, it's not a huge change. What we coach our kids to do here is the same thing that I coached my kids about, we've got to do. So, I mean, there's not a huge difference. It's three more people on the field, it's 10 yards wider and 20 yards longer.
Where you maybe become ineligible is if you are 11 man and you opt down. That's where you become ineligible, is if you choose to stay.
I don't know if that was the only situation that was possible.
That would be the situation.
Because that could happen to a lot of us there for a few years. It has happened to a lot of us.
You mentioned our conference, Brooke. That's a very fair question. We're in a new conference and, you know, what is our concern to be? We're the only school in our conference that's not already a co-op.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, even Kyle's had, right, I certainly have more conversations at the conference executive level than I have. But no, there's not going to be concern. Our conference schools aren't going to be irritated that now we've grown our participation numbers and our size of kids on our teams. So, that won't be an issue, our conference. You know, our friends from Osmond, they're in a different conference.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'll let them speak.
Because you're still able, some sports could be graduated.
Well, yeah, it would be a decision that would have to be made. Our next conference meeting is in December. And so, these decisions will be made by then. And then our board will talk and then figure out what we need to do to talk to Lewis and Clark Conference. Because it would make sense that we would become in the conference, you know, and until we get everything switched over, would they let us be in the two conferences or whatever? That's going to be a to the east problem, I guess, to solve. Eventually, it makes sense that we're in the same conference, obviously.
Football's a non-conference activity. So, if this is football, basketball for next year, basketball would be the conversation that Osmond would have to have with Lewis and Clark.
This is kind of a question for Kyle, and he can probably answer this. But as far as competition goes for football, a lot of the teams that we're playing already are on the line of moving to 11 man anyway, right? So, it's, I mean, we're competing against them anyway. They might move with us anyway, right? That's correct. Like Summerling, Pender, Wizardville, those ones that were two-year exemptions, weren't they? There's a slug of teams that could move up to 11 man already. Is that correct? And declarations have to be turned in. Co-ops have to be turned in by November 1st. December 1st is when declarations come out, where a school has to declare whether they're going to play eight man, opting down, or 11 man. And teams can opt out too. So, it just kind of depends. Once you hit December 1st, you'll know what class everybody's going to be in, pretty much.
And our main concern is, my, this one's actually my wife's, so, she's just not here. So, our football program, this is not meant good or bad or indifferent. Our football program, we have some early morning filming things that the kids are up early for. Then they have, sometimes they have practice after school, take it home a little late for. We have games, like my wife and I have to pick. It's just our family situation, because we have little kids, so we don't want them to stay out. We drive all the way home from Wisner at 10:30 or whatever. And that's good, that's not the point. But what would be the combination or workaround? Like, because you don't want the Osmond kids to be left out of some of those or part of those or planning or what they're about to be. So, would they join electronically or something? Or would they come over? Would the transportation back after practice every day? Or more moving in the vehicles always makes everybody nervous, I guess. And then would it be possible to find, like, if we do have to live in your schools, is it possible even to play, like, middle ground territory sometimes? Can you pick a different location where both go half or something, so that they can at your home?
Wrestling?
Yeah, wrestling.
I should put our football coach on the spot, but I won't. We do all our traveling up to Wausau right now for football. We have no practices in Osmond, and we have no games in Osmond. So, our kids are on the road every day. Our coaches are up there on Sundays for film and waits in the summer we're traveling up to Wausau. We do have a couple of days a week that we simply live in Osmond by ourselves, just so kids can get to jobs and things like that. But for the most part, we're driving up Highway 121. The only difference is that we'll be traveling west on Highway 20.
Well, with our competition numbers right now, we can all fit the van. So, they take a van up to Wausau. Oh, to competitions, yeah. Yes, yes, they take a school van up to Wausau. Yes, yes. And your last one about meeting in the middle somewhere, that's pretty uncommon. You lose your gate receipts, your concessions and things like that. And most schools would rather play at home. Because when you get a two-year schedule, you play home and away. So, we had the luxury of playing Boyd County in Osmond last year. They should be driving to Boyd County. So, you get it one year, you give it up the next. But normally, just for the gate receipts and, you know, getting to play at home and for your hometown people not having to drive, it's pretty rare. It is possible, but it's pretty rare.
Your last one, you promise? I would like to see, if this does come to fruition, and if you guys get enough feedback for both communities, that this is okay. I would like to see some kind of rule about how both schools are required to provide a coach. Because I know the concern is brought up that managing the kids when you're at your home is lacking if you only have, if all the coaches are from Osmond, and then the Plainview kids don't get managed necessarily. They would be by our staff, of course, but you know what I mean? And I know that concern had come up before. So, if you could put it in the agreement that each school would provide at least one coach, without anyone else, it's no bad. Somebody take this microphone from me.
Mine might just be a comment, but when are we talking about the basketball? What year are we talking?
Next school year, '26, '27.
Okay. My, this is just my concern. You're taking, I know many of you are out here in Plainview. I don't know how many of you are out in Osmond. You're taking maybe, because your numbers might be there, but your participation numbers aren't there. And it doesn't necessarily mean if you put two struggling programs together, that you're going to become a competitive team. I think if you watched, you might know what I'm talking about. But anyway, that's just my concern. But what would be around that?
Don't give me that. If it comes to you. Anybody have any junior high kids currently that wants to? Any feedback?
My child is very, I don't know, kind of against it initially. And we said we need to go in with an open mind. And within the first week, she has everyone's number. And she's texting everyone, and she can't wait to see them. It has been like a boy and a parent to see her blossom and learn you have to, like, work for your spot. And you're not just going to be given that spot on the volleyball tour. So, I very much appreciate you guys doing the junior high stuff and looking forward. Because it's exciting for us to see how this has already gone. And I think that, like, when you grow a smaller, you're just going to increase those participation numbers over the year. It might be a rough start, but already junior highs and junior high numbers, and if we can keep them together, I think that will increase those numbers.
Our boys have been participating with Plainview for seven years. And our oldest son is in the sixth grade. We've been coming over here for soccer. We've been coming over here for soccer. We have a sixth grader, a third grader, and a second grader. We currently come over, our two youngest boys are on the soccer team. Our oldest son on the football team, for the youth. We also wrestle here at Plainview. It's been nothing but great on all aspects for us. Kids get a lot ready. And we've been nothing but happy with it. And we hope to continue that. Hopefully, I'm not speaking solely here. I believe my wife and I are all agreeing. But we appreciate it, and we appreciate you guys taking the time to think about it.
I'm John Torrey. I'm our junior high football coach. And I'll just tell you, three boys in seventh grade here in Plainview. To be out for football, if you don't win very many games. We have a great eighth grade class. We have a lot higher numbers as far as that goes for participation. Ideally, you need about 10 in a grade to be competitive. So, you've got 20 in junior high, you do that for four years. And all of a sudden, you've got 40 out for high school. And that's, that's kind of where we'd be, that's kind of the bottom. Anything beyond that is great. And, you know, working with Coach Gaylord for the first time this year, I didn't know. We sat down. We sat down literally fifteen minutes before camp and hashed out what our philosophy is and how we're going to make this work. And I guess, you know, our team is a great model for what it can be. Uh, because we would be very average without Osmond. And with Osmond, we're really good. Especially if you guys have been paying attention to how our kids get along, how we're sharing the playing time, how we're riding the bus together. And it, it's a true partnership. It's not Osmond's coming over and doing everything plain. We're going over there. We've been over there way more than we practice here. It also requires a bit more creativity. Uh, we didn't have practice tonight because our friends in Osmond have church obligations. I'm not going to make a junior high kid who's going through confirmation and that process decide between God and their sport. And so that's just the growing pains we're going to have to work through. Friday mornings, we don't have the same school, this, uh, school schedule. So we can't practice after school because we've got professional development. They can't go. It's not fair and I'm not going to make our kids wait an hour and a half before we get on the bus and go over to Osmond practice. So we do a cool meeting. We try to utilize technology to the fullest extent possible. And, uh, the other night, we were playing in Alcorn Valley and we rode with the volleyball team, right? We got the thick cover bus and our, our kids loved it. That's not usually a spoil that goes to junior high kids. I drove the separate van with others, but it's packed. And then we're playing the JV game afterwards and we're still waiting on volleyball because they've got A, B, C, and D going in the other gym while we're playing two football games. And I'm watching the Monday night football game on the way home because I'm waiting on volleyball. And that's not really my thing, but we do it and our kids get along and there isn't one fight, there isn't one argument on the bus. They're sitting next to each other, they're exchanging the numbers, they're doing everything you can. So I think for a partnership to work, our, our team so far have provided a great model for what we hope the rest of the time is going to be together. And it's up to the coach and the community to support that and be creative and use all the resources we have because we're better than them.
I think too that maybe back off of that, um, I'm just going to point out the elderly in the room. The kids aren't, the kids aren't the problem. The kids aren't the problem with the decision. It's us as the adults. So, looking at your kids, would I want my fourth grader playing up to sixth grade football? Would I want my freshman playing varsity football and go and take them to the ER a couple blocks down the road because they aren't ready? No. I would much rather have thirty-six to forty kids on any given team playing at the level that they are expected to be playing at, at that moment. So just keep in mind, we are the problem. The kids are great.
To go along with what Mr. Torrey said, you know, with the different schedules and stuff, so if, if they do, is there going to be a way, you know, like, like they said, they don't get out early on practice, but we do, to like coordinate the school schedules more so that, so that, you know, the, the times and the practice times are going to be consistent and not, you know, like, not be able to halftime and push the game.
Great, great point, Liz. Uh, I can tell Mr. Bremer and I have never communicated in the spring about building the school's schedule for the next year. We will this spring. Now, we're not going to have identical schedules. We're, uh, we're pretty doggone close already. That was a conversation we had there. Uh, it coordinates well because we, we have separate dismissal times. So that, that travel does coordinate really pretty well. But, but days off, uh, and the start of the day dismissal times are generally within, you know, two to five or six minutes anyway. But, uh, but we'll certainly, uh, try to coordinate that a little bit better as we're building a schedule to be thinking about. Our kids need to come together, uh, frequently for practice, you know, and for contests, where those are. And, and so that's a very, very valid and fair, uh, comment.
Hi, I'm Kelly Lincoln-Peltere. And absolutely, Tiffany, I agree, kids are pretty fantastic together, no matter what. Um, social media, let's open that up for them to know each other before they play together. Uh, but I guess all the years, as Adam referenced, the soccer and, and youth sports and those things. So my, my only question is again, back to the girls, just a little bit with number participation. Uh, you know, the junior high numbers are so high. Um, I do think about our coaches, um, in those situations and maybe in one gym or whatever it is. But for next years, if, if we would proceed forward with the volleyball, I'm wondering like how many high school participants there would be? And would we then look to schedule more games if our numbers are so high that some of these girls aren't getting a chance to play? Is that an option?
Yeah, great questions, Kelly. Um, looking at participations roughly right now, based off of the numbers we have, I have twenty-six to twenty-eight for high school volleyball next year, uh, between the two schools. Um, could be a little low. I might have missed a couple, but if we're at the thirty mark, um, the NSA sets how many competition points you can have for varsity. Um, but we would definitely look at joining more freshman sophomore tournaments. Or can we have, uh, more C-team games? Um, right now, like when we do our quad to start the year, we do a JV in one gym, varsity in the other gym. We would try and do that with our triangulators and get all those girls more playing time and try and find more competition points for them. Same as with basketball. Right now, we have one freshman sophomore game. I would love to play freshman sophomore games on Mondays and get them competition, like games and things like that. So, um, yes, those are things we will look at and will work quickly, um, if it gets approved, uh, just because we want more kids, we want more opportunities. So that's what we have to do on our end.
There is, there is a, a practice space issue for junior high girls volleyball, I will tell you that. Right, Coach Hoster? Uh, all those girls in this gym with one net is difficult because our high school girls are in that gym with two nets and our Osmond girls, Barst, high school girls are in the Osmond gym with two nets. So, uh, is there a circumstance, if we were brought together for volleyball, where somebody's traveling to Osmond to use that practice space? Now, that'd be a coach's decision, administrative decision, but it's, you know, it's not unreasonable to say we're going to travel ten minutes so that we've got another gym with two nets if we've got thirty-plus girls. So, uh, so it is an issue right now for junior high girls volleyball. It's good that they don't, you know, once they started getting the games, they, you know, they enjoyed that a whole lot better than those first ten practices in this gym. And it's rare whether they got to go over to that gym, but they, they made it work in the best set of circumstances that, that we can provide. Uh, so our folks would, would be flexible and, and adapt to utilizing the best of both spaces.
Thank you.
I just have a question about the junior high, uh, girls and boys basketball practices, just going back to practices. Uh, you know, at Plainview, we do a lot in the morning, it's for gym space and things like that. Uh, then how open Plainview was or Osmond was to some morning junior high practices, gym space is very hard to come by sometimes. And with youth, I've been involved in the youth, uh, I imagine youth basketball would want to be combined as well and trying to combine them. Uh, so just as far as junior high maybe practices and there is night practices too and just kind of what thought has been put into that and how we can best serve the kids, you know, that way.
Uh, thank you. I'm not sure I've got everything nailed down on the basketball yet, but we have discussed the amount of gyms that we have and, and who's going to be in them this year and how we're going to utilize them to the best. Uh, the good thing is when junior high girls basketball starts, um, depending on how long volleyball seasons go, there will be a gap in there where, uh, high school basketball hasn't started yet, so that will help out. Uh, once that season gets going though, uh, we may be utilizing some morning practices. Uh, because obviously with, with Plainview having boys and girls going here, uh, Osmond will have girls practice there and that's going to take up the gym. So, um, could be some mornings and some nights once high school basketball takes place. I will tell you as the, uh, person that drives the bus a lot for our co-op, that I, I make a lot of trips to Plainview in the morning right now. Uh, whether it's in a bus with junior high volleyball team or whether it's in a car with our junior high cross-country runners, um, we've made it work. And I'm happy to say promptly in this entire co-op, we've had maybe one person, which just happened to be, um, this morning, I believe, that did not make it to practice. And so our parents have done a great job of getting our, uh, our students in and they've done a nice job of being ready at the time the bus or the car or the van needs to leave. So as of right now, morning practices haven't been an issue.
I guess I'll tell. I'm Tracy Steck. I'm from Osmond. I'm a woman in Osmond. Uh, I have my daughter who's in eighth grade. She's here with me. Uh, mine is more or less just a comment. I have four kids. She's my oldest. She's eight, she's in eighth grade. Uh, and then I have a sixth grade boy and a five-year-old kindergarten and a two-year-old at home. So I'm in this with a long hope. I just feel, uh, like the junior high here has been, uh, awesome for my daughter. Last year, she got to play, she says an Osmond Tiger, uh, which was good, but, um, she, uh, I would say is an athlete and wants to compete. Um, so this year has been really nice, um, with the Plainview girls and the Osmond girls, um, just being able to, uh, get to practice with, um, girls that are at the same level as her. I just hope going forward, this is a long-term commitment and as she gets, next year she'll be a freshman and I know volleyball. You haven't said yet her name for a co-op, but, um, as a parent of our kids and running in two, three different directions, my son does play the youth football over here as well. Um, I would just like to see it be a full co-op for her going into her freshman year. Um, I know that we could be Osmond Tigers as freshmen too, um, but, um, I just hope that people look long-term, not just like short-term. I guess that's.
We have sophomore, uh, there's only ten in her class, there's three girls, she's the only one who goes out with sports. We're, we're, um, except her parents. Anyway, she's very competitive. She wants to work, she works hard. And I just, I would love to see this happen for everything. Uh, she wants to excel, she wants her friends to excel, and she wants to, she wants to be good, wants to get better. And I feel like this is a great opportunity for all of us to have our kids get better. And I mean, there you go.
Anybody else?
I have one question.
Yes, answer.
For football games and practices in here because right now we're seeing close to seventy thousand, I've seen it in the sophomore. Can anyone go practice here, sixty, seventy thousand? So if only we could happen now, how's that going to be on our taxes?
Yeah, I think we said earlier that, uh, the overwhelming majority of, uh, at the high school level, practices and games will be in Plainview. Uh, occasionally due to, due to space or for whatever reason, the coaches will decide, uh, if, if practice would be, uh, in Osmond. Um, but, but Plainview will be the, the host, uh, essentially, uh, for most practices and most games for all sports. Now, gym space, obviously, we, we know we're, we're not going to leave the Osmond gym in by any means, especially during the winter time basketball season. And our friends from Osmond say, can we host a basketball game on this day, then this day? If we've got twenty games on the schedule, uh, we're not going to play ten games in Osmond. But is Osmond going to say, actually, can we play this one, this one, this, we got some special events or something, or, or we got somebody from the east coming, you know, can we just? I think those would be reasonable decisions that, that ADs will make, uh, on that. So we will be the host for a, a strong majority and practically all of football. That very certain. So I, I'll just make one final comment, turn to Mr. Rasmussen. Uh, back to one of the, something I mentioned at the outset. Uh, I've been a Plainview Pirate since nineteen seventy-two. And there is nothing that I would do as superintendent to delude our array. And, and so I, I hope I, I, you know, I'm not speaking selfishly, uh, but when Mr. Bremer made it clear, we're happy to come and be Plainview Pirates. We just want our kids to have an opportunity to compete. So over the course of this, I've just, I've gained some, quite a bit of admiration and respect for our friends from Osmond because I don't know if I could do what you are doing, which is, you're, I've been Osmond Tigers for decades and decades and decades. And I, if I put myself into your position, I don't know that I could do what, what you were willing to do for your kids. And so, um, from my perspective, I've always been, the more Pirates, the better. There's more Pirates on the court, on the field, on the mat, on the track, eventually on the bench, in practice, the more Pirates, the better. And so that's why I can be behind this one hundred percent, from my perspective.
Yeah, we did, we just really appreciate y'all coming tonight and giving your comments and questions, you know? So it's, it's a big step, but, um, I think it makes our job a little easier as board members to, to hear what you guys have to say, you know, and to take that back to the boardroom. So we really do appreciate that. Other comments in that way?
I have a little comment. With your, uh, long distance driving back to work, those are all steps in. I mean, you're going to have two ADs or you're a, a joint, there's one AD for the whole co-op. And I'm looking down the road, I'm thinking about that. Have someone solely dedicated to work and have all the skills.
Good question. Yep. Down, down the road for sure, you know, as we, as we move down, there'll be circumstances that will be talked about from administrative and school board level. Um, sure, there might be, there will be some things we maybe didn't anticipate. We think we'll do a good job of anticipating them all very well, but at some point, yes, it might be reasonable for our taxpayers to say, do we need, are we doubling up expenses, you know, for one program? Uh, but again, if each community, because we're, we're independent school districts, if each community says, we're willing to pay an AD, we're willing to pay an AD, they're working together, uh, that's a, that's a, that's an independent local school district decision. Uh, but certainly reasonable to suggest, you know, is that something you can consider down the road? Any other comments?
Yeah, Tim, um, I would like to thank the, uh, thank the school board administration for inviting the Osmond school board and administration over. Um, and appreciate all the Plainview and Osmond kids coming out and voicing their opinion because it does, like Tim said, helps us make our, our decisions easier, whether it be good or negative. We can, we can work with both of them and make a right decision for these two athletes once again. So thank you for coming out.
Yeah, well, we just need a force, a motion to adjourn then tonight. Hey, we have a second.
Second.
Okay, move to second adjourn on favor of Doug. All right? She's ready to adjourn. Thanks again for coming out.
The Osmond school board will adjourn at eight oh seven PM. Thank you.